My clock turned six thirty. And I can see via my magic mirror that we have a quorum in the room. And so I'm gonna call the meeting of the city council, city of Hillsborough order. Uh, first item up on our agenda is going to be uh, a little different. It's actually not on the agenda, but. I would like to take a minute and uh, and and just uh, out of respect in memory of Dolores Stalky. Our beloved mayor of twenty seven years who passed away this last Friday. I'd like to just take a minute of silence to remember her and uh, and think about her family. And uh, so if we could do that now, uh, I'd appreciate it. Okay, um, we, I think we all realize the debt we owed to Dolores and what. And the great work that she did as mayor for twenty seven years. That's a, that's a long time and uh. So, uh, we'll move on now to our consent agenda. And uh, we have three items on our consent agenda. We have vouchers of sixty nine thousand one hundred eighty two dollars and twenty cents. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers? Any questions regarding the vouchers? We also have minutes from our last regular meeting. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes? Any corrections, questions regarding the minutes?
I thought you said that the truck was in some line or not Texas.
Oh, it is now. At the time it was, at the time it was in Texas. Okay, 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 okay.
Okay, so. Uh, third item is uh, appointments. Uh, we have several to the planning commission. We have Lily Arthur. Uh, Joe Kleinsaucer, Gary Tibbetts and Eddie Weber for three year terms. And uh, one that's not on your agenda, but this is for the board of zoning appeals and that it will be Alicia Smith. Uh, and that's for a three year term. So any questions, comments regarding the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'd accept the motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman by seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all was in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, now that brings us to our first public comment uh, opportunity. Mister Styles, is there anybody in the room that I can't see that from the public that's there?
No one who wants to make comment, Mister Mayor.
Okay, what about online?
Uh, nobody.
Okay, so we will uh, we will move from that to uh. Or item D, which is a request from Jacob Johnson for uh, firework. To be uh, shot at a wedding. Is he in the room?
He's not, sir.
Okay, do we want to uh, just uh, table this item?
Yeah, we can table that and maybe revisit it if he shows up a little later.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, let's, we've got a long agenda, so I'm not trying to hurry, but I, I, I do wanna keep us rolling here, so. Next item up is uh, an annual report by uh, on the museums from uh, our museum director, Cara Duel.
Hey, everybody.
Hi.
And no, Cara, you gotta stand in for behind the podium.
Stuff out, Lou.
Getting pretty official here.
I will.
Pretty official.
So, you know, I gotta mix things up, keep you guys guessing all the time, right? Uh, there's one for Lou and here's one for. How's everybody tonight?
It's peachy.
So, I would introduce myself as Harvina Dent, but unless you're Batman fan, you won't have that. Yes, there's something on my face and I am fine. Um, obviously like my, my presentation in September revolves around the pool. My presentation to you guys in May. Uh, revolves around every other aspect of my job and I really feel like I have the coolest job in the city because I get to do so much stuff. I get to go by the Brent at work and ask for impossible things. Like gets to go, what is she doing over there?
Oh, when I walk outside and I see more in concrete.
Yeah, um, so I'm gonna start with the museums. Um, in this last year, since I met with you guys, we've had one thousand seven hundred and twenty one visitors. We've had eleven states and four countries, Canada, Poland, France and Ukraine. We ended up with one additional hire for the museum. It is my project search uh, intern. Her name is Danae Reimer, Reimer. Uh, and there's an example kind of of what she's done for us. There were spreadsheets, Excel sheets created for all of the files. In my sixteen drawers of filing cabinets. They were not real complete, lacking detail where you can see the yellow. Uh, that's where she has gone in and added additional information. Uh, the bottom one you see folder three seventeen, that she had to add that. Because it was a folder not even labeled or identified in the spreadsheet. So she's doing that. She's also gone through the, well, one and a half of the museum operation doors, which have no spreadsheet at this point. And she is creating all of those so that we can go to the computer and more easily identify what we have in our files. Uh, what we don't have in our files. She will also at some point be inventorying and accurately, accurately recording every item we have in the Schaeffler House because we do not have a true count. Of all of the items, the letters, the photos that we have in that house. And after last year's auction, um, obviously we have things that are in our ascension records that we don't have anymore. So she's gonna be taking those Excel sheets, locating them and determining what kind of condition they're in for us. She is extremely bright. She only missed two in the whole Excel course that she took. Um, she's learning how to give tours. Because she is there Monday through Thursday. She's awesome. Uh, the next page shows part of the, one of the exhibits that we did this year. Uh, Christmas for hometown Christmas and through the beginning of January, I did toys through the decades from nineteen hundred to twenty twenty. Lou, I hope you all have gotten all your stuff back.
Yep.
Um, it's amazing what came out of my house that we still own. It was amazing what. Lou and Lori still have and what Stacy still has, but it was fantastic. Uh, we did a Christmas story themed scavenger hunt at the Schaeffler House and we had close to two hundred and fifty people attend both of those. Just on down home Christmas day. Uh, next page. Uh, I had notorious in the schoolhouse for the month of April and in the right back pocket of the folder, some of the uh. Information that I got, like the scavenger hunt, the little booklet, things like that that the students got to play with. Uh, we had about a hundred and seventy five visitors for that, mostly educational, but uh. The police and the fire inspector were in, um, and there was a class from Peabody that came. We are currently working on a communication, entertainment and information exhibit, um, and those pictures did not turn out very well. I'm sorry. The concept is basically to show throughout history how information has been shared. Um, every section, like where it says the letter ends with the ellipsis. Because everything has continued to change and even when we get to the cell phone, which has ultimately taken over. How we receive information, communicate and entertain ourselves, still has a dot dot. We have no idea what's gonna come next. Uh, we are in plans for a uh, veteran celebration that will show those who fought. Because we have a lot of veterans here in town and then people that chose to stay at home and how they contributed to that. And I have really solid plan for the Christmas, down home Christmas, December exhibit, but I'm not sharing it because last year somebody stole part of my idea. Uh, next page, visitor center. Uh, it's needs some pretty desperate repairs. These are some of the photos for what's going on right now. On the first page, you can see soffits that are damaged. And the fact that there is no gutter system on the building at all. The posts that are out front that support that portico. One, the one that you have, doesn't actually touch the ground. It's not attached to anything at this point. The siding is warped, uh, the trim is coming down and if you turn to the next page, you'll see where the siding is coming off the back of. The visitor center, which is visible from D and Ash Street as you're coming in and out of town. The building center, uh, which would be the next two pages behind that have given me a quote for all of the siding. Guttering windows, uh, posts out front, et cetera. That total adds up to six thousand twenty seven dollars and sixty six cents. James Shaper has offered to do the work for approximately twelve thousand dollars. Um, obviously Matt and I have been discussing this for a while now. We do have some money, but in order for me to spend that much money, I need the city council to give me permission. Well, let y'all talk about that amongst yourselves later, because I'm trying to be quick. Uh, project search. We had one intern from Project Search this year, which we ended up hiring. We also prepared another student to be attending Project Search in the fall at Tabor. Uh, I've joined the advisory board for the program, so in doing so, I've been given the opportunity to. Work with the students as they're preparing presentations, how to write a resume, how to do a job interview, how to go out to a job site and investigate. You know, what that job site entails. So that's been pretty fun and with the incoming students for fall of twenty twenty three. There are two potential students that may be continuing to work with us as interns from Project Search. Uh, community gardens. I get to do all the fun stuff. So much stuff. Uh, the community garden is after a pretty rocky finish last year, um, which Dale can attest to also. Uh, it's up and running for the summer. Mister Hebert has created a schedule, so I know who is supposed to be there. Uh, all the families know who's supposed to be there. They all have each other's numbers. They're working in pairs so that no family is stuck on their own for a week. And Evan Yoder is continuing to advise them on planting and harvesting practices. Okay, uh, conferences. I attended KMA, which is Kansas Museum Association. And the Kansas Recreation and Park Association conferences in this last year. Both of them are awesome. I got to do a lot of networking, learned a lot of really cool new things. That I'm trying to incorporate into what we do in our town to make it more interactive, to bring the college and the, the town together. To get the high school and junior high and elementary school kids out in the community more visible. Just make it a more welcoming place for people to come here. Uh, as an advisor to the CBB, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, I've learned how to go geocaching. Still not very good at it, but I've learned how. I'm working with Mike Lawson on a multi-spot geocache for Hillsborough that'll kind of lead them around to different spots in town. Uh, hey Lou, if we make stickers with you doing this, can we put them in the geocache? I'm serious.
Uh, we'll, we'll talk about that.
That's a yes.
Uh, and as Brett knows, and thank God you all already know I'm crazy, I'm currently trying to come up with the world's largest honey bear. Um, the world's largest brings people into town. I would like to be able to put it downtown. You think about, we got CSI, which makes all of the plastic containers in the honey bear. We've got barkman honey. That's a pretty unique representation. Of Hillsborough and I checked the biggest honey bear I can find so far is only thirty two ounces, so ten feet, be with.
Yeah, sure.
So, got that going on, um. Okay, splash pad. And I, I want to. Express my gratitude to all of you, especially Matt and Danielle with being flexible with where I am. Because I am not in the same place most days. Um, so I have been given the opportunity to be kind of an honorary street department employee. And I don't know if Dale's excited about. But I, I've learned how to, to prep. Pour and finish concrete. Not great at the finishing. I think it's because I'm a little bit short and the poles are really long. But yes, they did let me learn how to drive the tractor and yes, I drove it down Main Street. Didn't hit anything. But I can patch your little asphalt stuff now. Um, and as, as Dale likes to go, you know, you know, people, you're really good with words. Would you? So I'm here.
Our PR director.
The would you? Um, if you turn the page one more, it's my last one and then I'll leave all you people alone for the night. Um, on A Street. You can see the two photos at the bottom. One is from across A Street where the yellow house is. That's the one on the left and the other one is standing at the corner looking down. You can see that there's a slope. There's a drop off and there's not a ton of space before you hit the road either.
Yep.
I would like to put up a metal fence. That would go about forty eight feet. It goes approximately eight to ten feet past where the actual splash pad meets the sidewalk. As a visual and a physical to any little kid that bolts off of it after something, um. To just kind of stop them from bolting out into A Street. And also just because of the slope, I wouldn't want anybody to fall down that. So, it is in the right of way. So in order to put this fence in, you all have to tell us it's okay.
Can I add to that?
Sure.
Uh, working at Hillsborough Ford, I can tell you, A Street is an issue. A fence along there is gonna go a long way because there's times when we're pulling stuff out from behind the shop. Onto A Street. It concerns me with kids on the splash pad or around it, that they're gonna just jump onto A Street and that's. We're, I'm, I am concerned about it and I.
That was.
Definitely agree with a, a fence there.
I didn't, we, you know, we went back and forth. Do you do the whole block? Do you not do the whole block? And if you do the whole block, A, that's pretty extensive.
Mm-hmm.
And B, if some kid does kind of dart off, then mom's either gotta climb over or run all the way to one end of the block or the other. So a forty eight foot section covers the actual splash pad meeting the sidewalk plus some. And I just.
It's a good solution.
You know, I, I deal with kids bolting all over the pool, um, and that's just, that's a huge concern for me.
Uh, it's a huge concern for me too, just knowing how much traffic is going on that street every day. I mean, I'm out there. Eight hours a day, period, and it's pretty busy. I can only imagine when the splash pad's going when we've got all our stuff going and then you've got kids and families and. So, yeah, that's definitely needed.
Nope, that's it. Anybody have any questions?
Did James say when he could do the repairs?
Will get us in as quickly as he can. He knows that I have to get approval for it and then even if you guys say, okay, we still have to sit down and look at. Where our museum funds are.
Okay.
We figure out what we can pull around, but he realizes that it's, it's pretty ugly looking. And he came and he looked at the siding and when he came back to me, he goes, you know that you have a post that doesn't touch the ground. I'm like, yeah, I, I know that. He says, you should probably just fix all of this at once. And Matt and I have had some conversations about the windows over there and James can do the windows at the same time, which actually ties it in much better to completing the project as a whole. And we desperately need guttering because that's caused half of the problems over there.
Any other questions? Great report, Karen. You're doing a great job with the museum and the visitor center and all of that and. And I just appreciate so much your flexibility to uh, to uh, be our honorary street department employee as well. And it's been fun to see you out there, you know, with your boots on, you know, helping those guys get that concrete poured, so appreciate it.
Would you convince them to let me drive the steamroller?
Uh, no.
No, I think it's just you're not on the insurance.
Yeah, pardon, pardon, no.
Fun away.
Okay. So, um, I see that takes us to our business section. And the first two items, I think, uh, we just discussed. The first one is fencing for the community plaza. That was the last thing that Cara brought up. And uh, do we, do we have an idea what, what kind of fencing? Are we talking about some kind of black ir- iron fencing or what?
Yes, sir. It's a black rod iron fence. Um, they come in four foot or six foot sections.
These are eight.
Eight foot sections. Uh, we've got it pretty well lined out what we would want and um, would do the install ourselves on that with the most strip. So we don't have to weed eat around it. Um, the only reason we're bringing it really to the city council is because uh, it's gonna be in the easement. And Jay, or uh, Ben and I discussed, uh, we probably should get permission to do that, given that we wouldn't really normally do that. Um, so that's, that's why we're bringing it to you. So we're essentially asking for permission that. The fence itself is only about thirteen hundred dollars, so uh, it's. You know, well within what we can approve, but we wanted to, we have to get permission to put the fence in before we should, you know, buy the fence itself.
So, any questions?
So, if it, if you were have to do some easement work, you would just have to take it down and put it back up.
Yep, thankfully we know people and we know, uh, we know where the, where the lines are there, so I think we'd be okay, but.
Okay, so what, what, I, I think what you're asking for is a motion to approve the location of the fence in the easement. Is that correct?
Correct.
I'll make that motion.
May Councilman Buy moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Trigger seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all was in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Uh, next was the siding and windows for the visitor center and Cara discussed that as well. And um, again, I'm sorry, did, did we have a, a kind of a guesstimate of what we're talking about financially there?
Yeah, it's eighteen thousand twenty seven dollars and sixty six cents.
That's materials and labor?
Materials and labor. Uh, well, we've got money set aside in the museum trust fund. Um, that is designated for improvements to museum buildings. There might not be enough un- undelegated money in that. So we may have to take a little bit out of the operations. Uh, there's also an opportunity to potentially ask the friends of the museum for a little bit of assistance. They've raised. They've got several thousand dollars kind of set aside for this type of thing too, so. Um, that's, we would kind of triage the money part of it, but um, primarily I think it's gonna come from the museum trust fund.
Okay, any questions? Hearing none, then it accept the motion to approve the uh, repairs to uh, the siding and windows uh, to the visitor center. Uh, at the amount Matt stated, the eighteen thousand dollar. Close amount. Okay. Who seconded that?
I did.
Okay, Councilman McCarty seconds. We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all was in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Total again, Matt?
It's eighteen thousand twenty seven dollars and sixty six cents.
And uh, last item regarding the community plaza is uh. The votes part of concrete bid to complete the sidewalk and the uh, parking along the alley. There to complete the uh, the concrete work proportion of the project. Councilman, or excuse me, uh, Mister Styles.
Thank you, sir. So, uh, we've been working on this project for over a year now. I think we've done, I think we've done an outstanding job with it. And we, we've done overwhelmingly, well, almost all of it with just a little bit of assistance through our city crews, but. We're kind of, we're getting down to the point where we want to be finished with it. Uh, we're also in a, in a little bit of a labor shortage because uh, one of our street department people has decided to take another opportunity, which is great for him. Uh, but that leaves us with just two people in the street department who've basically been spearheading this entire project. Um, and it's just really not feasible for them to continue to try to do this. That way, so in order to, to finish out primarily the parking on the backside, which would be the alleyway and then the remainder of the concrete work, which is mostly sidewalks. Uh, we, we asked Boats Park at construction uh, to, to help us with a, an estimate for that. Uh, they provided a quote for forty thousand nine hundred and ninety two dollars, um, which they could start this week, if weather permitting. Um, now our, our estimates on that, the remaining materials cost was twenty three thousand, so it's a little, not quite half. Or not quite double to do, have the contractor come in to do that. Um, so what we would ask and consider there due to our, our labor issue and. The, the time crunch and wanting to get some things finished here, uh, we'd ask you guys to consider that. Um, we would take the project from the CIP fund potentially, which is where we've been funding most of that. Um, I would mention that basically the entire Splash Park project has been funds that have been raised. Uh, independently through, you know, the work of our group of volunteers and then we've used the ARPA money to, to pay for the rest of it, so. Uh, federal government's paying for a good chunk of this and then what we've privately raised, so. Uh, we still have some money left in the CIP for, for this project and then uh, we also have the local option sales tax, which had three hundred thousand dollars budgeted. For capital improvements this year, should we want to use that. Um, so there's, there's funds available to do it. Um, so what we're recommending is that you would approve that and we can get, get this thing. Mopped up for the year and get ready to dedicate it to the first part of June, so.
So is this just for the concrete or is this for?
This is the concrete finish, all in labor costs, yeah. I don't know if Dale has anything to add.
Yeah, uh, we graded dirt out today, so it's ready.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none and accept a motion to uh, approve the uh, purchase from Boats Park for the uh, remainder of the concrete work. At the community plaza for phase one and the total amount again, Mister Styles.
Forty thousand nine hundred and ninety two dollars.
Okay, would somebody care to make that motion?
I will.
Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman by seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all was in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and uh, I thank you. This is uh, project has been a long time coming, but it's really looking great. And uh, I echo all the compliments to Dale and his team for the work that they've done. But just in, you know, getting the other departments, you know, it's been a real team effort, not just from the street department team, but. From all the honorary street department team members that uh, that have been involved in it up to this point and it's really looking good. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Looking forward to doing some splashing. Next item up is uh, surface sealing for downtown. Mister Styles?
Thank you, sir. So we've uh, solicited some, some quotations for sealing the downtown area. Uh, we use a product called Onyx Mastic Surface Seal. Um, when we're talking about downtown, in this case, we're talking Main Street, uh, from A Street north to just beyond the. Be just beyond the railroad right away up there between First and Second. Uh, and then we do Grand Street, starting from the alleyway by Dale's, all the way over to the end of this street on Washington. So that's kind of what we mean when we say downtown. Um, this is the same product we used previously. I think it was two thousand seventeen when they did that last. Something like, it's either seventeen or eighteen. Um, so it's a spray application and it get, uh, gets put on, extends the life of the pavement. Uh, we've already done the crack ceiling for it for this year, so. Um, the mastic part of it, it allows it to, to move with the flexing of uh, freeze and thaw type cycles. Um, it's held up pretty well, actually, and in some spots it's still pretty dark. Um, so, you know, we'd like to do that again. We put it out there to all the contractors in the state who do that. We got two responses back. You got the bids there. Uh, Hall Brothers from Marysville and Circle C paving from Goddard. Um, Hall Brothers was a three fifty square yard and the estimated total was about forty two thousand seven hundred and fifty two dollars and fifty cents. Um, and then Circle C came in at three dollars and forty cents a square yard, uh, with estimated total of forty one thousand five thirty one. Uh, after, after we got those bids back, Dale went back out and talked with Circle C about adding some additional square yardage. Um, to the South Main, so that it actually extends south of the Ford dealership a little ways. Um, the estimated uh, cost then, well, it moves the square, square yardage up to thirteen thousand four hundred and eighty nine. Uh, total cost of forty five thousand eight hundred and sixty two dollars and sixty cents. Um, these are all estimates on the designated area, so it could be more than that, slightly more than that. These are kind of how they measure them off and, and do the application, so. Uh, it could depend, depending on volume and how that ends up being, so. Uh, with Circle C having the lowest unit price, um. And they're also proposing a higher application rate, which is something the street department wanted. Um, they could schedule this in. I think this is kind of an important piece too. They can schedule this in in July and get that done ahead of arts and crafts. And in the summertime, uh, trying to split the job in half to where we could do half of the job. Um, one day and then half another day. Uh, Monday mornings is actually probably one of the lower volume times in some of the areas. And so we were talking with them about maybe scheduling to come in early, seven, maybe earlier than that and be able to get it done around noon. So we can only have to shut it down for half a day. Uh, and then they can flip around and come back either on a Friday or maybe even a Saturday and do the other half when it's a little less crowded, so. Um, there's drying times there. Hard to say how long it's gonna take. It depends on the weather, four to five hours, maybe to complete half a section. Uh, the biggest part of this is coordinating with all the downtown businesses so that we don't get anybody all irritated with us on that. Uh, once it's done, we'll go back in, we'll have to paint. Uh once it's done, we'll go back in, we'll have to paint lines again uh and parking lanes and all the traffic markings and everything about that, so. Uh the intention is to hopefully get the thing wrapped up by August, uh I think that's the the goal anyway, so. Uh project funds for this, we go through the special highway fund, that's what we use for street maintenance, right now we got a balance of ninety four thousand nine hundred and seventy five. Uh special highway funds or state gas tax money can only be spent on road and. Road and right away maintenance and construction, uh it's really where we spend most of our maintenance money out of. Uh it's really the only large scale project we have on the books for this year, we've talked about maybe doing some chip ceiling too later in the year, but we'll see kind of how that goes, so. Uh I think we recommend, we're moving forward with the Circle C at the unit cost of three dollars and forty cents per square yard. With the larger volume of thirteen thousand four eighty nine, and I would defer to Dale, if you have anything to add to the conversation on that?
No, I mean, I think it's a pretty good product and. Like you said, it it's lasted pretty good for us and uh. It's not, we've considered chip ceiling downtown, but that's um a little abrasive and rough and. So this is uh pretty smooth and it'll look new for a while and it's pretty good.
What about the uh dates regarding the county fair, we'll have the parade?
Yeah, we'll have to consider the the parade. Um any other functions, um but I don't think that's gonna be too difficult. Um and like Matt said, we're gonna shoot for a Monday and I talked to the contractor about that. Um I think that's pretty realistic, but you know, it depends on when. They're coming off of another job, uh when they hit us, if it doesn't happen on a Monday or just like we planned it. Um it's still gonna work, um we're just gonna have to notify everybody and. Um you know, be real open about what's going on when and. And work through it, we'll, you know, assist traffic and pedestrians and whatever we can to make things still roll downtown. Any other questions?
No further questions. Hearing none, I would accept a motion to approve the uh surface ceiling uh in the downtown area with the extended uh. Extended area passed forward at the three dollars and forty cent price and the contractor again was. At a Goddard.
Circle C paving.
Circle C paving, would somebody care to make that motion?
So moved.
Councilman Buy moves, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman McCarty seconds, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now we're on to the really expensive stuff, Mr. Styles, Blue Cross, Blue Shield renewal.
Yes, sir, so we've got our umbrella, um so just to remind everybody kind of how our our health insurance plan works. We have an umbrella plan that is uh high deductible plans through usually Blue Cross. Uh and then we we write our own plans through Freedom Claims Management, a third party administrator underneath that, and then we basically buy up the deductible for employees. And cover the gap, um so what it does is keeps, you you get the benefit of having a high deductible plan and you're self-funding. Uh as the buy up portion of it, so we maintain some of that revenue for our health claims and. Uh we've done, you get those reports every month, kind of how we're doing on that and we've done really well. Um this is, this is one of those times where it just looks ugly, because the renewal came back and it wasn't great. Um we looked at, we had Freedom Claims, they help us kind of just part of their services, they look at the plans and they go out and get collect bids for us and and take a look at those. Um so we we ended up with what's called a a level funded plans, what we had this last year, which was extremely affordable. Uh we were able to save quite a bit of money on that, but they've essentially non-renewed us with that, they came back with a hundred. Hundred and four percent increase over the premium on that, uh which is a non-starter. Uh we did look at United Healthcare, which is another option, one of the other big options in Kansas, and they came back with a hundred and seven percent. Uh premium increase, which is not great. Um so we were kind of left with a regular Blue Cross, Blue Shield, age banded plan and then the Kment pool plan. You know, so when we looked at the age banded plan, they came back with almost a sixty percent increase over the premium. Um to two hundred and seventy two thousand dollars, uh we last this last year, the current plan year, we paid a hundred and seventy. So it's about a hundred thousand dollars difference, um which is pretty significant. Uh we looked at the Kment plan and they they were a little bit lower on that, but there was a couple of problems with that, they don't run. A plan year plan, they run a calendar year plan. And so we would have had to figure out how to bridge people that six months from when our plan ends to the calendar year. Uh and that just was a complete mess and then. Because they don't offer any kind of uh deductible carryover, there's no kind of thing there, we would have had to fund all that ourselves, um which. Wasn't particularly affordable nor desirable for employees. Uh and then they also have, they may have a a cheaper premium now, but there's a guaranteed. Uh or a cap on on the amount that they can be charged each plan year as twenty percent, so. I guarantee that they're gonna get a twenty percent increase in their pool plan next year, because that's what they've gotten this year and. They're a new plan, they're establishing, so I would anticipate them be at that max. So when you factor that in, it actually ends up being more expensive to go with the Kment plan. So what we're recommending, uh it's a significant different difference in premium, but when we did the budget last year, we didn't. We didn't budget down to this plan that we're in, we kind of kept it somewhere in the middle, so the actual difference in cash isn't as bad as a hundred thousand dollars. It's only about forty eight thousand dollars, uh which still is a lot, but it's not a hundred, so. Um I think we'll be able to to manage through the rest of this budget year and looking next year while we're prepping that, we'll make sure to include that. That money there, uh and then we've got not quite a, not quite a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in our our fund reserve. To play to bake, to pay, to pay claims out of, so. Uh we're actually sitting in in a decent position, all things considered, when you look at that renewal. Um so what we're, what we're looking at is moving or recommending that we move with Blue Cross and Blue Shield, Blue Shield renewal. Uh with an estimated plan premium of two hundred and seventy two thousand three hundred and thirty four dollars. It's probably clear as mud, insurance is super confusing, so I I'm happy to answer any questions about that if you want.
What happened?
Well, yeah, that's a good question, we were in a uh what's called a a level funded plan this year and I are. I guess our claims were just more than they anticipated. Now, from our side, when we look at our plan year, it didn't appear to be that way, so they didn't like something in our group. And so they pretty much have said, not this year, maybe next year, but not this year, so. We got a really good deal on this this current plan year. Kind of how insurance has been going this. For everybody.
Any questions? The only comment I would have is uh I would uh. Even uh even if the number was close, I'd really have a hard time uh with United Healthcare. I have personal experience with the with them in my in my uh work and uh. I just want to make sure that we have good insurance for our employees, it's important that we have. Benefits, good benefits, but also benefits that we can afford and. There's gonna be another part of this discussion next that will uh address the employee's part of of the equation, but uh. For now, unless there's any other questions, uh I'd accept a motion to uh prove the uh age banded. Plan with Blue Cross, Blue Shield and the amount of.
Two hundred and seventy two thousand three hundred and thirty four dollars.
Somebody care to make that motion?
So moved.
Councilman Driggers moves, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman by seconds, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and now we'll move into the other part of this discussion, which is the uh employees' health insurance rates, Mr. Styles?
Thank you, sir, so if you go back to last year, we kind of talked about, we we actually froze the rates for employees because we had uh such. Such a good deal on the the insurance part of the umbrella plan, so. Uh but we, when we did that, we had a discussion about getting people back up to the policy, which states that. Uh the city's gonna pay a hundred percent of single coverage and then uh the employee in the city split the remaining difference of that fifty fifty. Uh we really hadn't been in that way and when we had a bunch of people retire back in twenty twenty one. Uh it completely changed our our plan profile, so. What happened was, we had a really expensive rate for the single coverage back then. Uh and then uh what that did was kind of throw the the tiers off a little bit. Uh and when we moved, we re-profiled ourselves, you know, our our single coverage went down significantly, uh but. The way the percentages worked out didn't quite come come the same, um so it ends up being that. The employee spouse is really where where the issue is. Um that they were getting a really good deal for the last several years, because they were only paying about fourteen percent of the premium versus. The fifty percent, which is in the uh policy, so. Uh what we did is we came back and looked at the rates, uh which we just approved and kind of looked at what that's gonna be for this year. So put a table in there, they give you that, um then I subtracted out the single coverage, so you can kind of see what the difference is. Uh currently, if we kept everything the same, uh employee spouse would be a hundred and two dollars and eighty four cents, which is about fourteen percent. Uh employee child is a hundred and eighty one thirty, third about a third, uh and the family is the closest to the policy at four hundred and twenty two dollars and twelve cents. About thirty eight percent, so if we were to keep the policy as it is, this is kind of what it would be on that last column, so there'd be a pretty significant jump for employee spouse there. Um right now, the coverages that we have are ten, ten people in the single, six in the employee spouse, two employee children and four family coverages. I suspect that by in the course of this plan year, that some of those employee spouses are gonna flip over to family coverages. Uh just because of our demographics and we have some young, some young married folks, like just. For reading the tea leaves, I'm I'm sure that's gonna happen at some point, it's gonna end up being a family coverage, so. Um you know, just looking at our our, how our plan is is shaped now, we're about seven to ten younger, ten years younger than we were on average. Uh back in in twenty twenty one, pre twenty twenty one, so it's just kind of how it works, um. So we've got this distortion that we need to deal with, um you know, we've got this this policy that says we're gonna pay fifty percent, um. One solution I looked at doing was maybe we reduce that from fifty to forty percent. Uh which would cost some since pretty significant changes still with employee spouse, but it would, it would be more in line kind of with where we're at on. Uh the other folks, the employee children and the family. Uh and when you start looking at kind of what that is overall as a premium, it ends up being somewhere in that eighty to seventy five percent. Where the city would be paying for that much of it, which is pretty consistent with what we're seeing out in the market, if you go and look at what other kind of private businesses are paying, so. Uh it it there's no good way to 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 do this with employee spouse, they're gonna need to pay more. Um I don't like doing that, but the fact of this, they've they've had a really low premium for several years. Um so, you know, if we wanted to two-step it in there, we could, we could do that in in a way that would be. Uh a little bit less painful for them, um if we if we went down to forty percent and we looked at doing it in two-year chunks. Uh the employee spouse, assuming that we didn't have a big increase in the following year, would be about ninety five dollars and eighty one cents per month more. Uh employee child would increase nineteen dollars and seventy seven cents per month and the family would increase nine dollars and seventy nine cents per month, so. Um you know, that was probably the least, least. Um the best we could do with what we were looking at, I I just don't feel like we can. We can't, we can't not ask employees to pay more for that, I mean, I think everybody understands when you have a sixty eight percent premium, it costs, somebody's gotta help. Pay for some of that, so. Um you know, while it would be lovely to do that, I don't think that that's really appropriate nor is it very responsible, so. Um we've we've kind of come up with this solution to take it down to forty percent, um. And then do kind of this two-step thing where we would go for that, uh so what you have at the last. Last uh table there is kind of what the contributions would end up looking like per month. Still covering a single at a hundred percent, um employee spouse would go from a hundred and two dollars, a little over, almost a hundred and three dollars a month to. Uh a hundred and ninety nine dollars a month, then two hundred and ninety five dollars a month the year after, if we kept that. Employee child would uh, which is now a hundred and eighty one, would go to two oh one, uh and then two twenty following year. Family would be, which is now four twenty two, would go up to four thirty one ninety one and then four forty one sixty nine. So, that's, that's kind of the. It's kind of the best we could do with what we were looking at, uh Vision and Dental on the plus side, don't change at all, those are actually performing really well. Uh so great, those aren't too bad, uh one of the other things we did look at doing was uh increasing the benefits slightly there, so. Uh we had some requests from employees about imaging, we used to have a benefit in our old Blue Cross plan that covered the first three hundred dollars on imaging X-rays. Um so we were able to slide that back in there, create limited costs based on our our claims data. And then we also reduced the um emergency room co-pay from three hundred to two hundred. Um if you, the thought process there was if you have a kid or you. You fall off a ladder and break your arm, go into the emergency room, uh it'd be a little less costly for an accidental type thing. So it's kind of why we package those two together, so. Again, not a great, there's not a great solution to this, uh with that premium increase and. Needing to get things back in line as far as what what employee spouse specifically is paying, um. Uh this is, this is about the best we could do, but we're we're open to suggestions and uh open for discussion.
Okay, questions, comments? Okay, hearing none, uh would somebody care to make the motion on the uh on the Blue Cross two-step proposal?
So moved, forty percent, Blue Cross two-step, that's.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second? Councilman McCarty seconds, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for your work on that, Matt, I know it was uh it was tough this year, so.
Yeah.
Appreciate, appreciate some of the thoughtfulness in the in the in kind of making those. Little adjustments, it might be uh might be helpful as well in the process, so thanks for doing that. Uh next item up is a real estate purchase, Mr. Styles?
So uh rewind the tape about a month ago, we had a land bank meeting to sell Chuck Maltby two lots. Uh for ten thousand dollars over kind of north of his facility there. Uh we, everything we had showed that it was in the land bank, including the county's website at the time. Uh so we went in and I did a title search, which I like to do when we're, every time you sell a property, you should verify that that's correct. Uh and our our records ended up being incorrect, something had happened when they filed some land bank deeds and so. It actually was still in the city of Hillsborough's name, rather than the city of Hillsborough land bank name. Um so what you have here, we would have had to do an agreement with Chuck either way. Uh but what you have is actually an agreement with the city of Hillsborough and and Chuck to purchase those properties rather than the land bank. Um so we're correcting that error before it becomes a bigger error. Uh and then once, once we execute this, uh we can issue quick claim deed to check for those two properties and just move forward, so. We caught it before it became a a real issue, but um just one of those weird fluke things, we we having. Having some struggles with our land bank, making sure everything is accurate, we double-checked several of those properties several times and. Uh still, still dealing with this on occasion, so I'm still pulling, I'm still pulling title searches every time we do it, so.
Where is this?
These are two lots in Hillsborough, um on the business park side, so it's kind of south of, south and east of Midway Motors. Around the cell cellphone tower.
A really prop popular property for.
It's real popular property.
Okay. Any other questions?
Do you just need a motion to agree?
Approve the sale?
Right. I'll make that motion.
Okay, Councilman Buy moves, is there a second?
No, second.
Councilman McCarty seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for that correction and uh now we have an executive session. And then after our executive session, we'll have a a land bank meeting, so. Uh if somebody would care to make the motion for us to go into executive session?
I guess I have. I moved the city council recess into access. I moved the city council recess into access, executive session. For the purpose of consultation with the city attorney for matters privileged pursuant to KSA seven five dash four three one nine. B two for a period of ten minutes. The executive session will include the city administrator and the city attorney. The open meeting will resume at.
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty. I'll second that.
Hey, we have a motion, the second, any further?
I second it.
That's what I said, that we have a motion in a second. Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are in executive session. Okay, it is now seven thirty and we are out of executive session. And for the record, let it be stated that there was no action taken during the executive session. And we will now, uh, recess the city council meeting and move into a land bank meeting. Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So, uh, got a couple of. Uh, offers to purchase properties. So, uh, first one is. Uh, from Elcon Property LLC to purchase three lots in Hillsborough Heights. Uh, the total acreage on that is two, uh, two point oh four acres. It's three lots. You got a picture there. Uh, of kind of where they are. So Elcon is directly across the street, um, and these would be across the street from that. Uh, they're kind of bordered by the Scully Estates on the west side, and there's drainage ways on the north and east side. Think that the long-term, I don't want to put words in Mr. Garing's mouth, long-term what that looks like, but I think there's some kind of.
Elcon Properties is not Elcon. So, um, it's a. Potential. Whether we build rental spaces or we do something, but we gotta have the potential first to. Even begin to think what that costs and what the budget's gonna be and. If there's any grants available to, you know. Hmm, create something. Um, I know there's the, what was it? Seed grant and the base grant. They also kind of threw in some things to where you could. Can't remember which one of them was, but was restaurants or.
Hmm, so yeah.
More of a retail rental space and that's an idea that we kicked around, other thing it. But right now, and, and, and Elcon expansion is possible, but not really what we were shooting for.
So it would be safe to say it's some sort of other venture through Elcon Properties. Um, so we've got, if you looked at the, the ten thousand, the normal pricing that on these is ten thousand per acre. Um, so it would be a little over twenty thousand with that. Given that it's remained pretty much undeveloped for a decade and I've seen no interest, I think the fifteen thousand's fair. Um, and I think that, you know, potential for more, more sales or more, more type of activity there is. Uh, a desirable thing for the land bank. Um, so we're recommending that we. Move forward with accepting the offer on Elcon property and begin the process of selling the property because there is a process with the land bank. So. I think that's acceptable, right?
Yeah, we're. Right across the street from you guys.
Oh, yeah. So the, the two lots that we currently have, one is a V-shaped lot.
Uh huh.
And then the other one's a regular rectangular lot. So these line up completely across the street.
Okay, sweet.
So we have two lots, but the three, because the one is B-shaped, actually lines up. It goes straight across the street that way.
Right.
If you, if you want to get going in your motion, you could authorize the mayor to sign purchase agreement and then.
Okay.
We could get that process moving for the next.
Really no hurry. It's just, I'm just seeing how the outcome is gonna be.
So then to, to amend that, we would have the mayor ought, uh, sign a purchase agreement to get the process to move forward.
Okay, any question?
Hey, what?
Any question?
No, I got a comment. I think sometimes we have stuff like out there since for years. Sometimes I think we even ought to. Put a better price on it, what we do, just to get rid of it.
Well, we, we've been negotiating with everybody coming through the door. So.
Yeah, I know. That's a comment. I'm glad you're saving money on it. Yeah.
You got a moment. True. And if Joan buys it and does something, what did it go be a taxable here?
Yeah, so yeah, helps us out in the long run.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, that accept a motion to, uh, authorize the city to extend the purchase contract and, and have the mayor sign. In preparation for a final sales agreement.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Councilman Buy moves, Councilman McCarty, seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And by the way, I vote aye. Uh, so, uh, uh, the motion is ca, is approved. Is there another item, Mr. Styles?
Yes, sir. Similar vein, uh, got an, an offer to purchase the lot at one twenty-eight South Main. Uh, this is the red brick building lot, the infamous red brick building lot. Um, it's about this, you know, point oh seven acres, so it's not very big at all. Um.
Do I need to recuse myself now or later?
You can do it later. Yeah. Okay. So Hillsborough Ford Mercury Inc. is, uh, offering to purchase that property for five thousand dollars. Uh, that is the amount that the city had to pay for it from Dennis Gora in two thousand twenty-one. Uh, now we, I don't think it's very reasonable to expect to recover the demolition cost for that building. Um, we've done a public service, in my opinion, in taking it down, uh, and it's money well spent, but. Uh, that, that would be about forty thousand dollars more, and I don't know that we can expect that for that lot. Uh, we've looked at that lot for various things. We've talked to several people about it, just can never seem to get past the size and limitations of a lot. There's really no access to it other than from the front. Uh, we talked about using it for the community plaza in some way, but the only way that would be effective is if we could get, uh, Ford to remove their building there. And I don't know that they're ever gonna do that. I don't know if that's feasible for them. Um, so. Uh, what, and one of the things we talked with Michael Hagan about was to also put some kind of fence on the frontage of that. They're gonna use it for parking, I think, essentially. Um, and he agreed to do that, and we'd like to match the fence that we're putting in the community plaza that we approved earlier, something similar so that it. It all kind of ties together. So, uh, given the layout, the surrounding property. I don't see, I, I think that's a very fair offer at five thousand dollars and, uh, we'd make the recommendation to go ahead and, and do the same thing and approve of. A sales agreement and authorize the mayor to sign that.
Any questions? I think, um, Andrew on this, I think Blake can just abstain, can he not?
Yeah, that's fine. Okay. And I'll correct my previous statement. The chair, although as the chair.
Chair, sorry.
Sorry.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, and accept a motion to approve the, uh, the, uh. Purchase contract with the, uh, with the chairman to sign, uh, at a price of five thousand dollars for, for that lot.
I'm like, oh, shit, mayor.
When McCarty moves, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Driggers, seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those abstaining.
Abstaining.
Okay, motion carries, uh, three, uh, uh, four and one abstention. So we will now move out of the land bank meeting. We'll close the land bank meeting and move back into our city council meeting. And I think we are at the, uh, city administrators report, Mr. Styles.
Yes, sir. So I mentioned earlier, uh, that Darren Luthi was moving out of the street department, got a great position in Hutch. Uh, as a manager, so great opportunity for him. We're sad to see him go. Um, so we're down to two people in that department, uh, which is not enough to really do it safely. Uh, but we are out looking for a replacement. We've got some, uh, some fill-in. It was part-time summer help. We're gonna try. Uh, to get through the summer and find, till we find somebody. So we're, we're gonna, we're gonna try to do that, maybe look at some alternative solutions or some reorganization or something to try to meet those obligations. So. Uh, little bit of a difficulty there. I would say that we actually extended a, a conditional offer of employment for our water sewer position today. Uh, so we've been able to get somebody interested in that, and that's just the last one on the list, and now there's two. So. Uh, we're just gonna keep trying. Um, Johnson Services, you probably have noticed them around town. They've been doing. Uh, the lining project, they're doing about two blocks a day. They're actually down on, um, D Street today. They were doing D Street. What's that? Yeah, yeah, they've been on second too. They had an issue that we had to dig something up today. So, um, they should be done by the end of the month, if not a little sooner. Uh, some pump survey, we've got that out there, getting steady numbers, quite a few questions. Got a little over a hundred of those back. Um, we're hoping to, to get some, some of the, uh. We're gonna send some more emails out to, to our, our front desk customers and do some advertising for that. Uh, federal encryption standard for police radios, wanted to make y'all aware of that because that's gonna be a, a, a large expense moving forward. Um, so the, there's been some changes in those encryption standards and the sheriff's office has been. Uh, holding kind of meetings about that and with all the law enforcement agencies in the county. Uh, we've got to meet these standards by the end of twenty twenty-four, or else we have, uh, a limited ability to communicate with one another after that. If we can't meet those standards. Um, to update those, we would need to do some updating and replacing, which is about a forty thousand dollar expense. Um, kind of crazy. But there are some grant funds out there at the state level that are competitive. We're gonna put in for those. We'll see how that works out. Um. Not sure if the county's got a solution for that just yet, or if they're gonna maybe do a, a group application or something. I'm not sure, but. Uh, we're working on it and trying to make that as, uh, inexpensive as possible, but it's still. A pretty big federal standard to, to meet. So we'll see how it goes. Oh, attached, you got the fourth quarter treasures, first quarter's treasury report, and then the April report. I'm a little behind on my dashboard, but I think you'll kind of see how the. Daniels made some changes to that report, so you can see incumbents is on there as well, which kind of gives you a better idea of what's out there, uh, what we've been buying. What, where financials are. Uh, just got some quick hit stuff. We've got, we've been busy with planning commission meeting. We had three cases and two public hearings on the eleventh. So those are gonna be coming to you guys, um, in June. Uh, we've got an ex, we, uh, we've asked for an extension for the INI dissent decree from KP, or K, KDAT and EPA. Waiting on their response on that. Senior confidence reports coming out at the end of the month. Uh, we moved some service trucks around, so Rack and Golf are gonna share one, and then we're moving that spare truck, which is sitting out here now. Uh, over to sanitation, so Dave Lockwood doesn't have to use his personal truck anymore. Um, that's saves us some there. Got the health insurance savings report. Um. Child care center submitted a CDBG application or last week. Uh, and then the childcare, they submitted a childcare accelerator grant. I actually wrote the wrong number there. I transposed the number. It's eight hundred and twenty thousand instead of two hundred and eighty thousand dollar grant for that. Um, spoken, hoping to hear back both on those by July.
It's okay to make that on our expenses, not on grants.
Right, yeah. Make that, make that on the grant side. Uh, author, I, I, I made a change on the part-time officers. We're down to three. Uh, really need another three or four. Um, to make it work for us. So we moved them up to twenty dollars per hour from eighteen. Uh, it's really very cost-effective option to have part-time officers, because when we don't do that, our overtime costs are between thirty-three. Thirty-three dollars an hour and up for, to bring in a regular person on, uh, overtime. So. Having those people is critical and paying a little bit more is, is just part, part of that process, trying to recruit more. Uh, my evaluation, the employee portion of the three sixty evaluation closes this week and I'll forward that to you guys after I get that done. Uh, Dana Reimer mentioned that, Kara mentioned that. She's working for us on, on fairly part-time, pretty part-time basis. Um, but she's, she's doing a lot of work on the electronic records. Uh, the pool is filled and being prepped for opening day. Um. The gas heater is still out of commission, so we've moved on to solar blankets. We feel like we can gain some heat with that for about six hundred bucks. So. Uh, we're gonna try to do that. Uh, employee appreciation, we moved that. It was scheduled for Friday. We've slid, slid that back to Thursday at the scout house. Uh, so that people can attend Dolores Stolkey's funeral and not have a conflict there. Uh, so you're all welcome to come us with on Thursday. This is not Friday. So come on over Thursday and join us. Uh, we're also gonna be announcing our first MVP recognition recipient that day. So. Very excited about that. Uh, and then I'm just a reminder, I'm gonna be on vacation next week. So. I think everybody's prepped. We got good people. We shouldn't have any problems. Everybody's prepared. But I, don't, don't call me that week. They'll be out of the country. So. Um, that I think is everything I had, sir.
Hey, any questions for Mr. Styles? Um, we'll now, uh, move into our final public comment opportunity. Is there anybody in the room that, uh, would like to comment?
That's good. Yep.
Hearing none, we'll close our final public comment opportunity and move to council comments. Councilman McCarty?
No, sir.
Councilman Driggers?
Not tonight.
Councilman Buy?
I actually do have something I'd like to, to address the council, if I may. Do you want me up here, up there, or?
No, you can sit here.
Sit here, okay. Um, so we all know there's properties in Hillsborough that mowing is. Uh, not being taken care of very well. Um, properties that are overgrown and just unisore. Um, I've been following this guy on YouTube and other social media. He's got millions and millions of followers. Um, what he does is he goes in and he'll go and ask owners of. Properties that are overgrown, or they just can't mow their yard or take care of their yard, if he can mow them for free. Um, he doesn't charge him anything. He just wants to be able to promote his YouTube cha, YouTube channel and his other social media outlets. Um, come to find out, this guy is from Wichita. Um, so I reached out to him Sunday night, just out of the blue, just to see if he'd be interested in coming to Hillsborough and. Uh, using some of our property in town that, um, isn't necessarily taken care of very well. Um, and he agreed that he'd be willing to do something like that. Obviously, it wouldn't cost the city anything and. We'd just be giving him a platform to, to, uh, promote his stuff and do his work and. I don't know if you want to show a little bit of what he does. I know it's kind of a long video, so you can kind of.
I just dropped it in the.
It's, it's pretty neat what he does.
Yeah, he's a good, pretty good worker.
So you see, so like, some of this property that he does is incredible. I mean, he, uh, I mean, he cleans everything up. It's insane. And he pressure washes stuff, he weed eats, he edges. Go ahead and skip to the end of it, just so they can see what the property looks like when he's done. I mean, it's, he pays quite attention to detail and. But I've chatted with Doug Dick a little bit about this guy. Um. And obviously with it not costing the city anything, what I wanted from the council was just permission to. Continue to reach out to him to see if he'd be interested in coming to Hillsborough and, and cleaning up some of our property. Um, I was, I mean, he does it free of charge. I mean, he just does it for YouTube clicks and likes and stuff, which is fine, but. Um, I thought it'd be a great way to help clean up our community, um, without costing us anything. And it also promotes Hillsborough and maybe gives somebody in town that wants to maybe do the same thing to. Um. Push them and nudge them in that right direction. Um, because I know there's a lot of properties in Hillsborough that need work, but. Um, just wanted to get some feedback from you guys on it and before I. Call him later and say yay or nay or whatever. It's, it's impressive what he's been able to do. He does, he does yard work, but he also does, uh, pressure washer. Like with yards or with, uh, driveways and sidewalks and. Um, he recently got, uh, an award from the city of Wichita for the work that he's done and. He's just an, he's an outstanding guy. I've really gotten to know him just over the last few days and he seems pretty genuine. Um, I don't think he's just doing it for clicks and likes, but I think he actually really wants to make a difference. So. So I just wanted to bring it to you guys, see what you thought before I said, hey, you should come to Hillsborough and, um, check out some of our stuff, but. That's all I got. I just wanted some feedback from you guys. Good to me?
What, uh, we're just, we're just extending an invite. Basically, he's gotta give permission from property.
Right, I mean, that's the. And that's what, that's the thing that he does, is he goes and gets permission first. Um, there's some of the properties, and I've chatted with Doug about this, that they don't live here. So they have to figure out a way to contact these homeowners, but, um.
You gotta have the property owners consent.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's his biggest thing is that he makes sure to have that on camera. Yeah, and and that's, that's his biggest thing, is he makes sure to have that on camera.
Yeah.
So that way he doesn't get in trouble with.
He does a lot of yards, and I've watched a few of his videos, and he really cleans them up really nice. And I think he makes his money from YouTube.
Yeah, he doesn't, he, I mean, he's got his own.
He's got like a shop.
Yeah, he's got his own, he's crazy.
Sell merch.
But, no, he, he said he'd be willing to come to Hillsborough and. Um he told me worst of the worst is what he's looking for, and I said, I can probably find you about five or six yards that. Would fit your qualification, just. By just driving by it, but I don't know what, if there's any action that needed, or if you guys just say, yeah, Blake, go for it, and I'll chat with Doug and. Go from there.
I don't think it's an official city. Action or deal any, anyway, I think it's gonna be between him and the private homeowner, so if you wanna. Be a private facilitator for that, I don't, I don't have a legal issue with it.
Go for it. Okay, then I will call later tonight, but that's all I have, Mr. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate your initiative and, and uh anything we can do to help clean up our community is a, is a good thing, so. Okay, is there any other business that needs to come before the council? Well, I appreciate everybody's work, we had a big agenda and and we got through it in in pretty good shape, so. Thanks for that, with that, I will call the meeting adjourned.
Thank you, Leo.